One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Earl.
Here.
Mr. Beistel.
Mr. Carson.
Here.
Mr. Carr.
Here.
Mr. Palopowski.
Here.
Mr. Porter.
Here.
Mrs. Rowe.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
For the record, Mr. Beistel did contact me that he was not going to be able to be present this evening. Before we do citizens' comments, I would just like to state that this is not, it is not, a voting meeting because of late advertisement, but there will be presentations of budget information, an information session, and discussion, but this is not a voting meeting. Citizens' comments?
Hello, my name is Pat Walter. I live at 741 Roughstow-Alberton Road, Mont Pleasant. I am a paraprofessional in the autistic program. I attended the first meeting with ESS on April 16th. At that meeting, the questions that I mostly wanted answered were about health insurance. There were five representatives there from ESS. Not one could answer my questions about insurance, not even the insurance company's name. I had to go to another meeting yesterday to hear about the insurance. And everything that I heard about the insurance makes it unaffordable to me. I was told by the administration that I would be getting a raise working for ESS. I noticed my choice to stay or to move on. If I stay and purchase insurance from ESS, I would definitely not be getting a raise. I am hoping that the board, that the administrators and the board directors that voted to outsource Paris had the best interest of the Southmoreland students in mind, not just saving money. I am hoping that you did not know of the misleading information that ESS promotes. Just to name a couple, yesterday when their insurance broker gave a presentation, he said that a Teladoc would be available day and night to diagnose, treat, and if needed, prescribe medication over the phone for $25. In the benefit enrollment guide, it says it is a convenient and effective treatment anytime, day or night, at no cost to you. The broker said it was $25. How is that free? On the ESS website, it states that there are bonuses. When I asked the gentleman from ESS about the bonuses, he said they are not given by ESS, but some school districts do give them. I would hope that the administrators and school directors that voted to outsource did not know that there are no sick days or paid holidays with ESS. I hope that you did not know that if you elect to use insurance ESS offers, that you have to give them a credit card or a bank card so that the insurance payment would be charged or deducted monthly because there may not be months that earnings will not cover payments. Yesterday, the broker did not have the exact payment amounts for the $1,250 hourly rate that we would get. The chart in the enrollment book started at $15, and it is income-based. He said to call his office for the exact amount. I thought that was an important figure that he should have had. I would also hope that you didn't know that if we choose to stay and use ESS insurance, there would be a $6,000 deductible for an individual and a $12,000 deductible for a family. As I have stated, I love what I do, and I am very passionate about my job. In my opinion, there was not much mention of our students from ESS. If I choose to stay, I would still feel the same way as I do now for the students, but I'm not sure that I would feel part of the Southmoreland School District team. I can only hope that ESS has Southmoreland students in their best interest and does not see them as just a way to make money. Thank you for your time.
I just have a couple things, some good news. This afternoon, the Southmoreland Middle School Student Council was awarded a $900 learning outside the classroom grant. This provides our student an opportunity to learn, grow, and lead through learning experiences designed to enhance community awareness, networking, and leadership skills. The students are thrilled and looking forward to this adventure. I also, last evening, received information that the district had applied for a Pennsylvania Commission on Crime grant. It was a two-part grant. One part was A, which was meritorious. We had already received a notification of a $25,000 grant on that. Last evening, the second portion of that, which was the B section, which was competitive. We were also notified that we received $91,700, which will be used towards upgrading our facilities to ensure the safety of our students in schools. I would like to thank Mr. Kiefer. I thought I saw him somewhere. I would also like to thank Mr. Pushkar and Mr. Clara for assisting me in writing and developing and overseeing this grant. We also received some pretty good news yesterday. The top Westmoreland County high schools ranking was released yesterday, and I am very proud to announce that Southmoreland High School in Westmoreland County was named number four, right behind Franklin Regional, Norwin, and Ligonier Valley. So I would like to congratulate the staff, faculty, and administration of the high school for a wonderful job well done. And I do believe US News and Today also has released the rankings that they will receive a silver award nationwide. I do believe they rank somewhere in the 3,000s nationwide out of 17,000 schools. So congratulations to the high school. Thank you very much, high school. That concludes my report.
Business manager report and information on budget.
I would yield some of my time to Mr. Kropchak if he wants to say something about that outstanding achievement for his building and for his staff and students and families. Come on. Come on, Dan, oh, you should say something.
You have to ask permission from the president.
Okay. I would also yield some of my time. You have a few items on the agenda for discussion. If you want to go to them before we get into, you know, more budget discussion, the Central Westmoreland Career Technology Center proposed budget, and the other item on here is blackboard renewal confirmation notice. Would you like to go over those first?
Are you addressing Mr. Kropchak or myself?
I'm addressing the whole board. I'm done with Mr. Kropchak.
We're going to follow the order in which it is listed on Board Doc, so I would like for you to proceed.
So what is written, so it should be done. I brought my talking points with me. Now, I had to come get down here for the executive session, so I know my, our copy are still running copies. So I will certainly make more copies available. We can certainly put it on our webpage. Didn't want to drop them all.
Thank you.
Want for the medical?
I don't want to, it's not like a work question, but it's like a corn odd.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. In this one? It's been bothering me.
It works. Wow. Technology. If I was really good at technology, I would use that PowerPoint gizmo. I would prefer to use the old overhead transparencies like we all grew up with, but... You have your handouts, correct? Some of them have been spread out in the audience? Okay. These are my talking points. A budget status update. Now, we started in January with the preliminary budget proposal. Our expenditures at that time were $32,398,92. As of today, our estimated expenditures are $31,315,905. That's a $1,082,187 expenditure decrease to date. Our estimated projected revenues as of today, $30,611,972, and that includes the tax increase using the Act One index and the special education exception. So our current budget gap between anticipated revenues and expenditures is down to $703,933. I'm not as good as our art teachers or our students, so my simple graph shows the expenditures in February, today, the estimated revenues, the budget gap, and our estimated ending Turn the page, please. Can you hear me if I talk without that thing? No? Okay. All right, you'll have to suffer with the microphone. Okay, this is a summary, one-page summary of the budget. At the top is our estimated assigned fund balances, unassigned fund balances, total estimated beginning fund balances for the new year. Well, actually, it should say total estimated ending fund balances. Typo. Two and a half million dollars. I highlighted 7.4%. The percentage of the unassigned fund balance to the proposed expenditures. Because there is that state mandate that says we cannot have more than 8% of our unassigned fund balance, more than 8% of our expenditures for the upcoming year, we're down to 7.4%. Ironically, overall, the estimated ending fund balances are at 8%. We still have 207,000 left over in our, what we call, assigned fund balances. And, you know, discussing with Mr. Petonic, I said my intention for holding that is for the potential of any tax assessment changes that might entail us having to make tax refunds. But the school board has total authority over what to do with their assigned fund balance. Now, estimated revenues for next year, local revenue?
Excuse me, before you move off the fund balance, okay?
Yes, sir.
The fund balance, so you're projecting that the budget for '19 is 100% correct. We will lose 300 and some thousand, which will drop our fund balance as of '18 to $2,876, down to 2.5. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that is subject to change. I am not done with my forecast for how we will end this school year. Okay? All right. I try to reserve that for either the approval of the proposed final, which is at the end of May, or for our June budget discussions. Now, local revenues are estimated at $12,467,000. State revenues, $17,642,000. Federal revenues, $501,000. State revenues are 58% of our revenues. Okay? So we are dependent on state help in a district like ours. Total estimated revenues, as I stated on the previous page, $30,612,000, leaving total estimated fund balances and revenues available for appropriations at $33,123,000. Now expenditures, instructional expenditures, $18,253,000. Support services, $9,124,000. 3,000 non-instructional services, about $931,000. A small facilities project, $52,500. Other expenditures and financing uses, which the main bulk of this is our debt service payments, principal and interest, $2,856,000. And our estimated budgetary reserve that you build into your budget, $100,000. So total estimated expenditures, $31,315,905. I highlighted the 58.3%, which is our instructional expenditures. That's what you would expect to see in any school system. The deficit between revenues and expenditures, $703,933. Now, I have a blue line highlighted there with some question marks. How to close this estimated gap? Use fund balances, further budget cuts, greater subsidy increases, other. That story is to be told yet. This is just the beginning of May. I've not heard much come out of Harrisburg yet, so time will tell. But the budget is not a static document. It's a fluid document. It will continue to change as estimations come to light, new information comes to light, information from Harrisburg. Some little talking points at the bottom. Will the Commonwealth adopt a state budget on time? A bunch of question marks. Well, if you've been around long enough, read the papers, you know that sometimes they just don't pass a budget on time. We don't have such a luxury. We have to pass a budget by June 30th. Sometimes we pass the budget, they haven't passed theirs, and we're standing there, we're sitting there, we're discussing, what will they do? Sometimes they wait months to pass their budget, leaving a lot of agencies, school districts, authorities, nonprofits in the lurch, higher education systems, colleges and universities. The current budget does include a 1% increase in our main state subsidies. I went that far. Originally had one-half of 1% increase. I went to 1%. I've not heard very much or any acrimony coming out of Harrisburg, so I'm thinking they must be working on a budget compromise. So perhaps we'll see more than a 1% increase in state subsidies. I'm praying for more than 1%. Yes, sir?
That'll give us another $176,000?
It could, very well.
If they appropriate?
It could. Actually, more. Yes.
I'm just going by what you have as the state?
I understand. I understand. All subjective. Number three, any more possible budget additions and cuts before final budget? You know, that's to be determined. And I know later in this meeting, point number eight, further discussions tonight on proposed budget cuts by Mr. Masha. The draft revenue does include the Act One increase of 3.1% plus special education expense, I'm sorry, exception. The date of adoption for the proposed budget is May 23rd. Our date for final adoption, June 27th. And as I stated earlier, you know, the budget status will be updated as more estimates and conditions change until final adoption. We will be totally transparent with whatever changes come to light. The next page, some more budget factoids. Our draft budget so far is $31,315,000. Our budget for this year, the final budget for the '18-'19 year, $30,565,000. So right now, the budget increase is at 2.46%. $750,000. And in any time in the past, a 2.46% budget increase would have felt good, given salaries and benefits, utilities, transportation. Bill?
No.
Okay. And I have a summary there of the changes within the budget on the categories, wages and salaries. The net reduction there is $26,806. Now, we had two big changes in salaries. Of course, none of us are comfortable and happy with having to outsource our building We had eight teachers retire at the top salary step, and we're replacing, the plan is to replace two of them. And of course, somewhere around a master's step one or two. Big change in the salaries and wages. That offset all the other increases in salaries and wages in the budget. Benefits, a big net decrease in benefits of $400, nearly $497,000, a 6% decrease in that budget category. Again, when you have that kind of change in your personnel structure, along with that comes the benefits. The big benefit now, which is overshadowed, health insurance, is our pension obligation. Other changes in purchase professional services, $747,000. 56%. And most of that is for the purchased professional educational services at other institutions. And Mr. Masha and the staff are working on those, that very category, to get that down. Purchased property services, $105,000. Other purchased services, $189,000. Supplies and textbooks, $245,000. Equipment is down 49%, a negative $37,000. Dues, fees, interest, and the main reduction there in interest is in debt service interest, down 5%, nearly $51,000. On the other hand, as your interest payments go down, sometimes your principal payment goes up, so we have a debt principal increase of $75,000. Got some information here on the sheet regarding average assessed values for homesteads in both counties, median assessed values, highest assessed values, lowest assessed values, total assessed values of homesteads, number of homesteads. Current millage rate in Westmoreland County, 77.78 mills. Fayette County, 14.4586. There's a letter on the very next page. State Department of Education has done the calculation of what our proposed millage rates will be with the Act One tax increase and using the special education referendum exception. For our Westmoreland County properties, that would be 81.32 mills. Fayette County, 15.2992. So for the Westmoreland County properties, that would be a millage increase of 3.53 or 3.54 mills. Fayette County, .84 mills. What's that in percentage? Well, that would be a tax increase, Westmoreland County properties of 4.5%, Fayette 5.8%. And again, as the letter states, that is subject to change. So if you look at the letter that came in back on April 11th, I stamp received, they did the calculations for us based on the information that we submitted with our preliminary budget in February. And of course, it says we have to use their software, the PD 2028 form, of course. It will generate, when we do our final budget, it will generate the actual millage rates. But I'm sure these are pretty darned close to what they will be, if, of course, the school board votes for the tax increase. The next page is just a computer printout. I used that information in our discussion in the first few pages, just so you see where I get my numbers from. The next page, you'll see some, it's just page 10 of a summary of the functional expenditure accounts. It's just the last page. Shows the totals, and you'll see some red markings, the actual 17, 18, they call it previous year expenditures. I marked 18, 19, which is our current year budget. You can ignore outstanding encumbrances and year-to-date. That's good for Bill and I in trying to do forecasting for the end of the year. And then in the far right, you have next year's estimated budget to date. Last year, as, you know, our auditor went over, how long ago has that been now? Was that back in November? We spent in 17, 18, $31,550,531. Last year, June 28th, we passed a budget for this current year. We knocked out $985,000. Our budget for this year is down to $30,565,385. So school board, administration, everybody's working hard to make sure we, let's try to put an end to the talk of, well, we're bankrupt, or we're broke, or we're going broke. That's not going to happen. We're not going to let that happen, okay? No. We're not going bankrupt, and we're not going broke. We have a budget imbalance, and we are working to fix that, like any real-world company has to do. You read the newspapers, companies, sad situations. I came from Steel Valley School District before coming here. Steel Valley. Munhall, Homestead, West Homestead, Steel Valley, Steel Mills. They got crushed when the steel industry went out of business. Crushed. Bill talked about when, was it Sony left, what happened here. Big, big change down in that district. They managed to survive. Why? How? Well, they had to make some tough decisions, just like we're making tough decisions. In June of 2011, as they were passing their 11, 12 budget, they furloughed 45 employees. Not ERIP situations. Furloughed 45 employees, teachers, administrators, secretaries, janitors. It was crushing. I went in there a year after the fact, and they were still suffering from the blow. But you know what? They were still working hard on their budget. And they were coming out of the depths of that crushing blow because there's waterfront development. Anybody go down to the waterfront? What has risen up from the ashes of the old steel industry? So they are recovering, but it took a lot of pain for them. Same thing here. That's what we're doing. We're not going to go bankrupt. We're not going to go out of business. We're not broke. So let's try to end those kinds of wild rumors and discussions. Now, we passed a budget, well, I'm sorry, we have a draft budget this year of $31,315,905. Again, that's subject to more budget cuts. So that's a change in budgets as we have in the earlier sheet, 750,000. But compare that final number at the bottom. When you compare what we spent in 17, 18, $31,550,000, what we're right now to date proposed to expend next year, we're still down a negative $235,000. So that's unheard of, except in this era that hit us with the Great Recession, that hit us all back in 2007. hit us all back in 2007, 2008. This school district struggled through it. Other districts have struggled. Everyone has struggled through the Great Recession. So we're rightsizing our business model. We have to. We're no different in this industry than the mining industry, the steel mill industry, the auto industry, you name it. They all had to go through those rough adjustments, closing plants, furloughing people. Now, they have the option, which is terrible, of outsourcing to foreign countries, but still that doesn't help the folks back home. The next page, everybody talks about millage rates. I have a copy of our Westmoreland County millage rates where we currently stand. So they took the 1718 millage rates, what we all passed or did last year for 1819, the percentage increase, and some other data that people feel interested in seeing and comparing with amongst ourselves. I highlighted the Southmoreland. Among our Westmoreland County peers, we currently are the lowest school tax millage rate. And I put some boxes around what I thought were, to me, comparable districts in size and structure. Again, comparable, but not exact, of course. Our next-door neighbor, Yawc, they're up to 90.34 mills. Now, I'm not suggesting we get into a race and try to catch up with them, but, and look up right above there, Mount Pleasant, 90.84. What is different about those two communities, which we are contiguous with, versus our community? What has happened? Ligonier Valley, where I worked, 81.9 mills. Jeanette, 87. Greensburg-Salem, 88. I didn't bracket where I live, Hempfield, 83.46. So my wife and I are paying more taxes there. Oh, I just paid my spring tax bill. Everybody else pay their spring tax bill by April 30th to get your discount. Did you notice Westmoreland County's 20.99 mills? And don't forget the extra $5 that they're getting from vehicle registrations. Have you noticed that when you've had to renew your vehicle registration? That went up five bucks, and that goes back to Westmoreland County. So they have property taxes too. I don't know when they meet. Maybe I should pay attention and go to their meetings. My Hempfield Township millage rate is three mills. So, doesn't matter where you live, we're paying property taxes, school, county, townships or boroughs. Next page. I'm not done with this sheet. I'd like to go further back in time, and of course, I want to extend it. What you don't see on this sheet is the piece of paper that I had taped to it, where I'm working out my forecast for 1819. The column will be 1819 budget, my 1819 forecasts, the variance difference, but I'm not there yet. Across the top, I penciled in our tax millage changes, just the Westmoreland County side. I apologize if anyone is here from Fayette, but if there was a tax increase, you felt it too. But your assessed values and your tax millage rates are very different than the Westmoreland County side, and we have to go through that difficult calculation. Thank goodness we have the PDE format to do that. But I put on your millage rate increases, just on the Westmoreland County side, right above those fiscal years. For '08, '09, you had a .4 mil increase. In '09, '10, you had a negative .2 millage decrease. '10, '11, you had a negative .1 millage decrease. '11, '12, zero millage change. '12, '13, 1.66. '13, '14, zero mil increase. '14, '15, 1.35. '15, '16, zero. '16, '17, 2.2. '17, '18, zero. And of course, we had a tax increase for the 1819. There's a pattern there. This is a test. You figure out what the pattern is. Keep the answer to yourself, or sign a card and come up here and speak. I highlighted some other things. Look at the, when you look at total audited revenues, '10, '11 fiscal year versus '11, '12 fiscal year. Bill, what happened there? Revenues went down $2,787,000. I wasn't here, I don't know what happened, but I'll tell you my theory. It was because of the era money disappeared. Is that right, Bill? Yes, of course. That happened to me up at Ligonier Valley. Wow, did we get hit. What happened, Mr. Marnell? Well, let me tell you. What governor was that, Bill? Was that the Fast Eddie?
Uh, I believe it was.
Or was that Tom Corbett's first budget? No, that was Tom Corbett's first budget. I apologize to Governor Rendell.
But that had nothing to do with the state, it was federal money.
It was federal money. They used federal money to pass through to us, and they took back money that they normally passed through to us to make it look like we were okay, still getting the same. Maybe you've heard over recent years how over a billion dollars in state subsidies to public schools have never been made up. Well, that's what happened to all of us. The federal money that we got under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, that was a one-shot stimulus era. That was to try to get the economy going. Anybody have one of those old clunkers that you got to trade in and get a tax credit to get off the road? I know Jan remembers that. Unfortunately, back then, I didn't have a clunker. I have a clunker now. It's a 10-year-old truck. It's sitting in my driveway, needs a water pump. Why? Well, Chrysler, even though I have a lifetime powertrain warranty on that vehicle, they don't make the water pump anymore for it. I wish I had the clunker credit today, I would take it. Okay, I highlighted in the center there, facility acquisition, construction improvements. I highlighted some numbers there, and then I connected those numbers with a line further down, other financing uses, and I penciled in there, transfers to capital projects. Rose by any other name is still a rose, right? So, money spent on facilities, construction improvements, whether you spend it out of your general fund, or you take it out of your general fund and put it in your capital projects fund, it's the same thing. So when you talk about spending down your monies, whether it be fund balance or not, those are significant dollars when you look at those expenditures. Look at the, under the 1112 fiscal year, $1,840,000 was taken out of the general fund, transferred to the capital projects fund. What happened? I'll tell you what happened. District built, correct me if I'm wrong, anybody, they built the maintenance building. And also, there was a prod-
It was maintenance, Jim, and-
It was the drainage ditch on the visitor's side of the bleacher field. They had to put that new pipeline through.
And finishing the property where the old middle school was, the old East Lincoln High School and the parking lot.
Okay, right, gotcha. Were those bad things to do? No. You have to keep up with your facilities. You have to keep up with your buildings. Maybe today's individuals would make different decisions than the individuals over here a decade ago, but you had a need. You had no maintenance facility. You tore down an old high school or junior high, and you built this school building here, and you converted that space into a fieldhouse for your stadium and a parking lot fort. Are those bad things? No. I remember the first time my wife and I came down here to watch my son play football for the Wendover Middle School. We came down here to play the Scottys, and we were floored at how beautiful your facility was. We saw it, wow. It seemed like a private college campus, private college football field. So you should be proud that you have good facilities. Thank the folks that were here that made it happen. And of course, last year, 1718, and part of the money spent in 1617 was for the guaranteed energy savings program, facility improvements, the new energy-efficient gas boiler for the primary center, energy-efficient lighting for inside the primaries. Anybody here from the primary center? Any staff? No? One? What are those new lights like? Are they okay? They work? All right, good. We had new lighting in our two gyms here in this campus, and I think, was it, did they do the high school gym too? Dan, pay attention? Wait, what happened? I hear talking back here. Did I say something wrong?
I'm gonna ask a question about this.
I think it's very relevant. I'm a historian. I like the past. Stop, stop, please, stop. It's not your turn to talk. I have the floor. Ma'am, you're welcome to come up and speak. Are you Mrs. Williams?
I'm not.
I want to tell you something, Mrs. Williams. I watched the tape, and you said it was appalling that I missed two board meetings. Mr. Put-
Mr. Marnell.
I just want to explain something. I want to explain something. The March meeting was because my mother got rushed to the hospital. That was my family emergency. And the meeting on the 25th was a pre-planned trip. We took our youngest son to Washington DC. It was pre-planned months ago, before we even knew that, instead of meeting on the 3rd Thursday of April, the board decided to meet on the 4th Thursday of April because the 3rd Thursday was Easter. So I just want all you folks to know that I did not blow off two meetings. I don't blow off meetings. Okay, next.
You happen to be the best disrespectful man in this group of people.
That's fine. That is your opinion, ma'am. You are welcome to it. Now, let's continue to look at the past. In the center there, you have the excess of revenues or the deficits. You see in 1112, we had a deficit of $2 million, then some positive years, and then we had some negative years, again. Again, as Bill pointed out, retirement expenditures have run out of control, and we have no effect on that. We talked about the net change in fund balances. That's directly related to whether you have a surplus or deficit in revenues. And then the change in fund balances. And correlated to, fund balance are your cash balances. There's a very close correlation to whether cash goes up or cash goes down. We don't pay bills in fund balances, we pay in cash, and that's very important. Then, of course, at the very bottom, you have a summary of fund balances going back to '08, '09, to the end of last year. And I highlighted the high point in that spread. That was '10, '11 school year, $7.9 million. And we got up to $7.6 million for '13, '14. And then it's been down because we've had a difference between revenues and expenses. And that's the end of my talking points, and I'm going to turn it over to the school board.
What was your estimation on what we get from the statistics here?
A little over $10 million, I'm sorry. A little over $17 million, about $17,500,000.
Okay.
Good. Hi, is the floor open for discussion?
It is.
I got some handouts that need to be handed out.
Mr. Porter, can I encourage you to speak so that everyone can hear?
You can't hear me?
No.
I'm sorry. A little bit worse.
Is that? Mr. Porter.
He pulled it in.
Is that the microphone right there in front of you?
In front of Jason. Yeah, but I don't know if that'll go. There, we pulled one closer.
Sorry, David. Can I, can you hear me? When I was here, my budgets were never on, okay? Because budgets are estimates. And knowing they were estimates, I always wanted to tie the dollars into reality, to something factual. So I always needed a factual base to start from. And so what I know as of today, that at the end of 1718, I know what the numbers were to operate this district, okay, as of 1718. And I extrapolate from there. And if you look, okay, on the first page I handed out, the portrait page, you look at fiscal year where it says 2018 to 2019, that's this present fiscal year. I start with the actual number that we operated at in '18, $31,550,000. And I told you last week, I know that this district needs annually $700,000, year in, year out, to operate. I know that. So I put that into my calculation. If you look down from 2018, you're going to see estimated operating increase of $608,000. Peasars increase. I separate peasers because peasers such an important dollar amount now, such a huge dollar amount. I segregated. And I put, it's $100,000, and that's what's in the budget. So that gives me my $708,000 annual operating increase. I have to adjust the '18 fiscal year for facilities, construction. The number was around $950,000. That is not a typical annual operating expense. I adjust that final dollar figure for '18. I reduce it by the 950. There's an increase of $250,000 in the debt service, and that, again, has to be taken out of the number because that's not a typical annual operating increase. It only increased because there was a debt refinancing and a structure change. Overall, has no effect on the budget because although you're paying $250,000 more a year, you're paying, you're also getting $250,000 more in subsidy from the state. So it's a whoosh. But I need to get that out of there to see where I'm actually operating annually. And so what I couldn't figure out when I first come here, Jim gave me his budget, and the budget was around $30,465,000. Well, I knew we operated at $30,850,000 in '18. That's fact. Mr. Turnley was here, he went through the numbers, it's audited, that's where I want to start from. I want to start with a fact. So my first thoughts are, I go to Jim and I say, hey, Jim, how are we operating? How's the budget $400,000 less than what we operated at in 2018? And he hands me this list. This, I have it here somewhere, but it doesn't matter. He hands me this list, and it's all these cuts. And he, and Jim relates to me that at the last minute, I believe on June 27th-
28.
28, he was given a list of cuts of $1.1 million, okay? Well, I incorporate that in my numbers. Well, I incorporate that in my numbers. And I tie right in to what he budgeted. When I, when I, I had no idea there was $1.1 million in cuts. All I knew was that the budget showed we're going to spend $400,000 less in 18. It just never made any sense until he told me what the cuts were. So, our actual operating in 18, $31,807, okay? Down to $465,000. The $1,001,000 ties it in. And that tells me Jim's budget's on target. I know factually now that his budget is on target. And I can rely on his budget. So, now, we're in 1819. And what I need to do now, and this is what, this is what I did while I was here. I'm just, the board never got this. They just got a... For, I was fortunate. Well, you know, I was the worst budgeter in the world, okay? And, but my good fortune wasn't, my last seven years here, we never had a tax increase. So, I was never pressured on the budget, ever. But I still had to know what reality is. I knew my budget was off. And I always had to keep a reality check on it. And what I'm doing right now is what I did for myself. I never related this format to anybody before. So, what I need to know now is, where are we going to end up for 19? I know Jim's budget's pretty close. He's on target. So, what, I go into the reports that we get. And I ask Jim for much more detailed reports. Because I need the detail. I go through and I analyze all the accounts. Spent hours analyzing. And I come up, okay, Jim's budget after budgetary reserve is $30,465,000. I'm coming up with a range where we're going to end up for expenses. And it's anywhere from $30,465,000, which is the total budget, which is highly unusual that you spend what you budgeted. It's, that's highly unusual. But I'm going to use that as my ceiling. And as I went through the accounts, I noticed Peasars is over budgeted by about $220,000. And then Jim, when he did his calculations sometime ago, he even made a note about he thought maybe they were over budgeted. Well, they were over budgeted. So, if you look under 2020 budget, this is where I'm at. I'm at $34, $30,465,000 for his budget. I'm saying that Peasars is over budgeted by 220,000. So, that knocks us down to $30,245,000. I also find that under contracted services for transportation, we're running, actual costs are running about $100,000 under what's budgeted. So, I take that in consideration. And now, I look at all the other accounts. And in the back of my mind, I'll come up about another $100,000. So, now, I'm at 19. Okay, now, I'm projecting where I'm going to end up for 19. And I'm projecting anywhere from $30,456,000 to $30,000,000. Okay, there's a $400,000 where I'm at right now. Knowing that, I take the middle dollar figure. I take the budget amount Jim has, $30,465,000. And I take, I know Peasars is over budgeted. So, that's my starting figure. That's my reality figure for starting the 20 budget. I take that figure. And I immediately add in 700, I add on to that, $700,000 in operating annual increase. Every year, every year, this district's got to meet that dollar figure. That's just where it's at right now. I also take into account, Mr. Mashin needs a book adoption. It's $300,000. So, I know that's going to make a change in that final dollar figure. So, I account for that. And I also know there's a net savings in personnel of $800,000. As Jim said, eight teachers, early buyout, six won't be replaced, 21 PCA's furloughed. So, I know, doing the calculations, I know there's a net savings of $800,000. All those numbers I know. But when I get Jim's budget for $31,356,000, I'm $900,000 out. I'm $900,000 out. And if the board recalls in executive session, I went nuts because that number was driving me nuts. I can, I could not figure out how this, what that means before you take into consideration the personnel cuts and the increases for textbooks. Cost for this district in one year was going to go up $1.6 million. That freaked me out. Because I was expecting this budget to come in somewhere around the figure of the 19 budget. Just logic. If your annual increases are going to go up $700,000, and you've got a net savings of $800,000, you know upfront from personnel cuts, and you know you're going to increase your dollars, $300,000 for books, okay? 700, 300, that's a million, less the eight. Your overall cost should go up $200,000. Okay, $200,000 on $30,245,000? I'm at, you know, I'm expecting the budget to come in at $30,450,000. But the budget's coming in at $31,356,000. So, I figure $900,000, $800,000, I can find this money. So, I take all the accounts. I take all the paperwork home on the budget. And I'm going through there. I spent a weekend. I start on a Friday evening. Spent hours on Saturday. Got back to it on Sunday night. And I went to bed that night talking to myself. Because I cannot figure out where this money's at. And this is, this has never happened to me before. And so, go to bed. And as I, I relayed this story to Vince and Jim. 4 o'clock in the morning, I wake up. Bam! I knew exactly now what happened. That $1.1 million that was cut in 19, the bulk of those costs got added back into the 20 budget. And what threw me is, all the years I've been in this business, when you make a cut, it's a cut. I've never operated where you make a cut, especially for that kind of money, that amount of money. And only do it for a year, but then add it back in. Okay? So, now, I know where Jim's coming from in his 20 budget. And now that I understand the numbers, I go for, I now, take the 20 budget. And I analyze. And I go down and try to refine the budget. And page two, okay? And again, these numbers are based on my analysis. They're going to be subjected to Mr. Mashia and Mr. Marnell. They're going to have plenty of time to review them. And, and see where that we go. But here's where I'm at. In the budget, there's $100,000 in budgetary reserve. Budgetary, budgetary reserve is a non expendable account. I use budgetary reserve. I would budget $400,000 in that account. And I used it for budgetary transfers. So, budgetary reserve has no impact whatsoever on the overall budget. So, I know that. So, I take that out. Refund of a prior year receipt, Jim has budgeted $80,000. I can't recall spending money or refunding any revenues. It was not a chronic issue. But for, you know, whatever reason, Jim budgeted $80,000 for refund of a prior year receipt. Now, if it comes to fruition, okay. And if it doesn't, that's even better. But it should not have an impact on the current operating budget because it is a prior refund of a revenue. So, that could, that should be taken directly from your fund balance. That is not a current, reoccurring operating expense. So, I discount that number. The $52,500 construction improvements we have in the budget, again, that's not a current operating cost. That should come out of your fund balance. Okay, so I discount that number. The fund balance is good, you have a fund balance for three reasons. Fund balance gives the school district liquidity. It's like the blood of the school, financial blood of the school district. The more fund balance you have, the more fluid you are. The second thing is, the fund balance makes you money. That's free cash sitting there that you invest constantly to make interest. And I can tell you at one time, at peak period, when interest rates were 7, 8%, I was making $400,000 to half a million just on interest earnings off our fund balance. But right now, those days are gone. We're not at 7 and 8. We're nowhere near close to that. But the fund balance is also used to make money. So, it's for liquidity, making money, and for capital improvements. When you have $65 million worth of capital assets, you know you're going to have to invest money. But because budgets are so tight, you just can't, you can't, there's no way you're going to get that money worked into your annual operating expenses. So, that's where your fund balance comes into play. So, I go on down through the budget. And I know Mr. Mashia gave us a list of cuts. And so, I went through the cuts. And I talked to him. And the original cuts he gave me was total of $423,000. And if you look over to the right, it's in bold. I took the $423,000. And I kept in team leaders at $40,000. Theater and music at $13,500,000. Reading review, $43,000,000. Math curriculum, $100,000. Cross-country attendance, $18,000. Those I left in. That left $208,000 to take out of the budget. As I said before, I analyzed the bus contract and where we're, where we're at expense-wise. I have to give kudos to the transportation department because they have really kept the costs down. I'm also the ex-transportation director. So, I know all about the cost of the transportation system. And I can project there's $100,000. We're spending around $100,000 less than what's been budgeted. I go look at the health benefits. Because Jim mentioned this. There's a, you know, we had a lot of personnel changes, which would have a very large impact on the healthcare cost. And when I looked at Jim's budget, his for 2019, he has budgeted $2,505,000, $2,535,000. And I projected that out. And that number's on target. So, you know, I'm relying on that number being a very accurate number. So, when I see Jim's new budgeted number for 20, at $2,350,000, okay? That reduces the overall benefits by $182,000. So, I'm sitting there and I'm thinking about it. And I know for a fact that just the PCA's alone, their healthcare was costing the district $315,000. Okay? I know we had eight teachers. That healthcare costs are freed up. Two will be replaced. So, that, I consider that a wash. That left six. I calculated those six teachers, a husband, wife, $17,000. That's another $102,000, okay? But I'm not sure of their status. I don't know if they're husband, wife. I don't know if they're single. I don't know if they may even be buying out their benefits. So, to play it safe, stay using a $100,000 figure. I'm thinking $50,000. So, the $50,000 on top of the $315,000 is $365,000, okay? Should be a, I'm thinking it should be a reduction around $365,000. But today, I ran into Vince. And Vince said he had bad news. The Health Consortium increased star rates by 2.3%. Well, 2.3% means a $60,000 increase. So, if you take the $365,000 from the personnel healthcare cuts, deduct out the 60, I'm expecting somewhere around maybe a $300,000 decrease versus the $180,000 that Jim is showing. So, to play it safe, I use $75,000 bucks. I reduced it by $75,000. Peasars, and I'm not going to go through the calculations. But again, I always go to an actual factual number. And I start off at 1718. And I know $12,202,000 was the salary base that we paid retirement on. And so, from that point, I extrapolate all the personnel changes up through 2020. And I'm not going to go through the calculation. But simply, I'm coming up with a dollar figure, $4,033,000. And Jim has budgeted $4,103,000. So, again, I play it safe. I, I'm just reducing it by $50,000. The other costs below Peasars. These are what I called soft cost, soft open cost. There is, there's, there's no fixed amount you can go by. They're very open-ended. You know, they're, the 300 account, object account, they are outside professional services. And very hard to budget for. Changes with the way the student population changes. So, you know, I try a fall pattern. And if you look at what I'm saying here, I go back, again, I go back to 18, where I know what we actually spent. That, that's my base. And I see what we spent. Then I go to the present year and I'm projecting. I'm looking at the numbers where we're at, where, what we spent so far. And I'm projecting from that point, okay? And as you look down, not large amounts, but they, you know, they accumulate. So, there's like, for object 322, I'm taking out $25,000. $30,000 for the 330, 333 counts. Repairs and maintenance, $15,000. Tuition to other LEAs. I know you look at 1718, my base year, we actually spent $115,000. I'm looking at what we spent in 19. We spent very little money. So, I reduced it by $12,000. That's because probably a child that we were educating in 18 may have moved, status changed, whatever. Travel, I reduced by about $5,000 bucks. I know we got budgeted $50,000. I know any year when we were having difficulties, that was the first expense that got cut, travel. Now, there's, you know, there's still $45,000 in there. And I can understand, like Charlie, the principals, they got to use our vehicles. Vince, that money's in there. Supplies, technology, looking at what we spent so far, looked at what we spent in 1718. I reduced it by about $10,000. And dues and fees, $5,000. The total, I'm coming up with a total reduction of $767,000. So, if you go back to your first page, and at the bottom where it says 2020 budget, I'm deducting that off of Jim's, not the present budget he just gave us because I didn't have it, but off the number he gave us before, the $31,000. I'm deducting that off of Jim's, not the present budget he just gave us, because I didn't have it, but off the number he gave us before, the thirty-one million three fifty-six. I'm projecting expenses around thirty million five ninety, thirty million six hundred. Now, this is my analysis. Jim has not had a chance to look at it, Mr. Mashard has not had a chance to look at it. They can look at it, they can analyze it. I'm comfortable with it, but they have to be comfortable with it. I'm only here for a short period, and they have to live with it, and they have to manage it. This is my suggestion, this is my analysis, my suggestion, and this is where I think the district should be operating at. Thirty million five hundred ninety thousand. Jim is forecasting revenues at thirty million six eleven. That tells you you gotta balance budget. I'm kinda thinking maybe, and I haven't even looked at revenues, but I'm kinda hoping revenues are understated, because I know Jim, you budgeted thirty million two for the nineteen year. I, I didn't analyze revenues like I did the expenditures, that's my next project, but giving it a cursory look, I think, and we, you know, businessman, all us business managers, we're conservative on revenues. And we, our budgets always come in higher. And I, I'm projecting thirty million four. So, you know, I'm looking at nineteen, anywhere from breaking even to making four hundred thousand bucks. I'm projecting twenty to break even. But I really think we need to make money, and I really think we have a chance at making money. If we operate at thirty million four in nineteen, and Jim says we're at thirty million six, and we go with a tax increase, that tax increase is gonna generate four hundred thousand dollars alone. I'm hoping then Jim's revenues are conservative. Because at this point, for myself, I'm comfortable where we're gonna end up nineteen or twenty. I'm looking at twenty-one. That's where I'm looking. In other words, I'm saying, I'm not gonna support a budget that doesn't raise the taxes to the max. Because it's not about twenty, it's about twenty-one. That's where I'm at. I get passionate, too. So again, Jim, it's your baby. I gave you all the explanations, you analyze it, you tear it apart, you, you know, you do what you need to do, Vince, same thing. And that's where I'm at.
Mr. Porter, I want to thank you very much for the massive amount of time that it must have taken to do this analysis. And, correct me if I'm wrong, traditionally, in the past, this district has always looked year to year in trying to balance a budget. We, we are at a point where we have to start looking three years down the line. Am I remiss in making that statement?
No, you should always be looking three years down the line. And another major point, that people, people have short memories, and they forget. When it comes to money, I don't forget, okay? Every district suffers from the same dilemma, the retirement system, okay? How it's been underfunded for years, and now we have to make up for forty years in basically ten years. And that's why you've got these massive increases. But every district's faced with that. What people forget is, this district suffered an even bigger setback. And that was the loss of Sony in an annual revenue stream of one million dollars a year. And the reason you don't hear that much about it, it's probably because when Dr. Hafield was here, and we were working together, by chance, three years prior to when Sony's contract was up, by chance. Well, in conversation, Dr. Hafield had a good friend that worked for the Sony Corporation in the controller's office. And that person related to him that, hey, she knew that Sony was not going to stay. That at the end of their lease, they're out. Now, this is three years prior, and Sony had made a decision, they weren't making an announcement till the last minute. So John come to me and say, hey, what do we do? And I was being facetious, I say, hey, John, what are you worried about? You're retiring in three years, I'm retiring in three years, we're out of here. When it collapses, we won't be here. But I, he looked at me like I was serious, and I started laughing, I said, no, no, I'm just kidding. So that's when we start putting our heads together, trying to figure out how to prepare the district, okay? And what John was afraid, he was gonna have to furlough teachers, which meant young teachers. And I said, no, no, we're gonna buy teachers out. We have a senior staff here, we're gonna buy them out, we're gonna make the announcement that, hey, if teachers don't buy out, there will be furloughs of young teachers. I mean, we're being upfront. And over that three-year period, forty-one teachers took the buyout. Twenty-five we replaced, sixteen we did not replace. The fund balance before the buyouts was four million, it blew up to eight million. And that's what threw everybody off, okay? The fund balance was so huge, and Sony left, okay? And everyone was thinking, hey, we're in great shape. Well, for the moment, you are in great, June thirtieth of two thousand twelve, you were in great shape. But then, the reason the fund balance blew up, we reduced our expenses by buying out teachers. But over that three years, we were still collecting a million dollars annually from Sony, okay? So we reduced our costs by a million dollars, and we're still collecting a million dollars from Sony, so our fund balance blew up. But if, well, if I had a choice, I'd give back the four million to have the annual one million in revenue today. And that's what people don't see. When a district loses revenue at that amount, you're gonna hurt for years, because this district's so poor, you just can't make it up. And again, I would give back the four million to retain that million dollars. In other words, I wish Sony was still here. So people forget that, and that's a big deal, that is a very big deal, but people forget that.
Mr. Porter, may I ask you a question? In lieu of, you know, we have to be, I think, take an honest look at whether or not there's gonna be new businesses coming in. But in lieu of any new businesses coming in, how can we generate additional revenues? Would it help if more people moved into this area and housing increased? Would that bring in more tax?
Yes, yeah, you need growth. But the problem is, we're kinda on the outside of the commercial corridor, the Route thirty corridor, or even thirty-one. We're kinda out on the side, so we're not getting that kind of development. I know the debate's been going on about closing the primary center. That discussion started even while I was here, even, three years prior, when John Haffield and I retired. Every year, for those three years of the budget, I would, my first question to him was, is there any chance we can close the primary center? And immediately, he'd say, no, we just don't, we need the space, we need to rent it. Well, I think now you're closer to closing that building, well, and that, that's fine, you do what you need to do. What bothers me about closing that building is, that building sits right in the heart of the school district, it is the center part of the school district. And it's, it's still a nice-looking building sitting up on the hill. And when you shutter that building, for me, I'm just speaking for myself, you're saying this community is dead because you're not planning on any future increase in students or population.
Mr. Porter, I would like to go on record as saying, as of right now, I, I am not in favor of closing any buildings, but I think that we have to explore that. And I do agree, because if, if you start closing buildings, that does send out a signal to the community that we are ready to fold. And I think that is not the message that we wanna send to our community. I'm hoping that we can, we can turn this situation around. We have great schools, we have great schools, we have a great community, and I'm hoping that we can work with the community in order to save what we have. And I, I, I think before we talk closing buildings, we have to do a very comprehensive study as to how that's going to impact the overall district itself, not only financially, but also our ability. I'm an educational leader, I, I have to still look at how that's going to impact our, our student in the services we provide them.
And I hope you do. For me, it's psychological, to see that building shutter and sit there empty is just another neon sign saying the community is dead. That, that's my psyche.
Thank, thank you again for all the time.
Again, you have what I gave you, analyzed. I need to tell you, next meeting is the sixteenth, I can't be here.
The ninth.
Huh?
Next Thursday, sir.
Oh. Was that on the original paper, working there? I gotta look at, I gotta read sometimes, but, okay, oh, it's a special meeting. Okay, okay, the sixteenth, I just wanna let you know upfront, I will not be here. I had a prior, my wife made a prior commitment that there's no way I'm gonna tell her no, so that's where I'm at. I will be here for the twenty-third, I guess we'll, you know, what I'm thinking about is more discussion on the budget, what, what you have in mind, I don't know.
I can assure you that Mr. Barnell and I will be looking at this information, and we're gonna be thoroughly analyzing it. Thank, thank you again.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything to add to the discussion?
Where do we have the transportation? I see that Mr. Porter suggested a little bit of a contract, that, you know, the cuts to that, but are we looking at consolidating these routes to try to trim that one point six million back?
That is gonna be a long-term look. If we're looking at a primary center, then obviously that's gonna impact the, the three-tier busing system that we currently operate, so I think down the line, that is, that is gonna be something that we will be looking at, yes.
Are there enough buses to, if you combine the primary center and the elementary, or combine the middle school and high school to start together, are there enough buses for the amount of students?
Mr. Squink would probably be more adept at answering that. I do know that whenever you are driving down the road and you see what you perceive as a bus being empty, we still have to provide transportation seats for students. For instance, the other day, there was a water line break in Scottsdale. If that water line break was not repaired within a, a set amount of time, I was going to have to look at a possibility of notifying parents and have an early dismissal, because we can't house, that was, that was in a very inopportune time, right around lunch. And then we have children that would be in a school without restroom facilities. So in those cases, if there's an emergency, we have to be able to provide that student a ride home. So we, we have to, we, we have to be able to assure parents that if something happens, their child has a way of getting home. God forbid, God forbid, I hope that there is never that emergency, but we still have to be prepared for whatever circumstances do come down our, our path. Please, I hope nothing ever happens.
And then, how did that, the, the cuts we had last year, Jim, how did they get put back into this budget?
Well, when the various departments looked at their projected needs for the next school year, not exactly the cuts that were made got added back, but other monies did get added back as part of their request.
Now, they want more money? Okay, thank you. What did you say, Jim? I, what?
Well, our, our various departments put together their budget for the, the next fiscal year. They, they work with their, their staff, they look at their instructional supply needs. We have increased textbook monies in there, so.
We don't put that automatically in the budget?
Well, it's, it was in the first draft of the budget, of course.
We didn't expend that money, right?
This is for nineteen twenty.
Right. We, we cut that before, so we should have saved money then.
Well, that was cut for this current budget, cuts that were made for this current budget.
So why would we now go back and put those cuts back in again?
We didn't put all the cuts back in, but some did go back in.
And by whom's authority?
Well, the administrative team putting together the first draft of the budget. For example, like the team leaders, sixteen of them at two thousand five hundred dollars apiece, that was cut for this current budget, I was instructed to put them back into the budget for the first draft. Just like the coaching salaries that, the coaches that were cut last year, we were instructed to put back into the first draft.
Why would you do that? Don't we decide what goes back in the budget?
When we, when we put together the first draft, that's where the internal decisions made in drafting the budget.
Somehow, this doesn't sonorate to me. You know, we take it out, and you put it back in, and hope that we will vote to put it back in.
We put it back in as an administrative team, it's not my budget, it's our budget. So if I'm instructed to put an expenditure in, I put it in.
Mr. Roll, may I, may I add something to that?
Sure.
We had instances in, in our primary center and our elementary schools, and possibly other schools, where, and I'm sure that you've heard mention on several occasions, where we did not have supplies for our students. Okay, that, that was part of the money that was put back in, so that we can, we can try to provide those, those things necessary for.
So nothing's been put back in until we vote?
Yes, sir. Ultimately, the board has the final decision on everything.
What I had a hard time is, we functioned without some of these things. And now we wanna, when we're just trying to get on top of this budget, we're looking at putting things back in again that we've done without. You know, and again, I hate to be redundant about, but we functioned for a couple of years without two other administrative positions, and I still think that's something we need to take another look at, is eliminating at least one of those positions. You know, not only are we looking for revenue, but we're looking for ways to save money. That's all.
Anybody else have any more discussion? Anybody else have any more discussion? Solicitors' information?
I would have nothing to present tonight. I would seek a point of clarification, though, if I may. Just so I've understood what you said, Mr. Porter, I think in your upper right-hand corner of your second page, your analysis based upon still doing the roughly $208,000 of cuts that are roughly what the superintendent is proposing.
Yeah. The one Vince put out on board docs.
Right.
And he has this new one out that's different.
It's got different elements to it, but you're still, in your analysis, you are still doing approximately $208,000 of cuts.
Yes. And the numbers you're looking at, well, the numbers, well, you see, I'm taking it out of the original $423,000 of cuts.
Right.
I backed them up.
And I beg your pardon, but just for the sake of clarity, I think the incident at which you are referring to when you became somewhat upset was not a school board meeting, but rather a meeting that you were having with Mr. Mashin, Mr. Marnell. And I happened to come in too late because I was tending to some write-to-no matters because some of the things that you have said here tonight, I heard there for the first time. And I think that's when you went nuts. Not really, but I'm just...
When numbers don't add up, when they're not logical.
Right.
There's an explanation.
Yes.
And I spent the better part of the weekend trying to figure it out.
Right. And I remember you mentioning that at that meeting, and the fact that you woke up in the middle of the night, which reminded me of something that's happened to me a few times. So, that's why I remembered it. So, I was just trying to clarify that point. Thank you.
No old business, moving on to new business. CWCTC 2019-2020 proposed budget.
Before we go that route, may I diverge one second? I am the superintendent of the district, and I have a notice of responsibility. I would like to apologize for not my actions, but if there was anyone in the audience that was offended because of something that took place tonight, I have worked recently very hard to try to foster good relationships with individuals. And I apologize to anyone that may have been offended tonight because of anything that was said. I would like to continue. I would very much like to continue open dialogues with people. A suggestion was made last board meeting to formulate a community committee. I have taken the initiative with the assistance of a select individuals. And do you mind if I mention? Okay, I know that Mrs. Williams, Mr. Ban, Mrs. Sekler, who I, okay, I saw there, Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Raymond, and Mr. Ansel. I met with them yesterday. And I want to thank you for taking the time out of your day. The reason why we met was that we wanted to try to better understand the circumstances that were taking place. We had some very candid conversations. I was hoping that I could share, and I did, share information with them. I would like to continue fostering that relationship, and I don't want that to be damaged because of anything that might take place. I appreciate the fact that you took the time, and I appreciate the fact that not only are we looking at a yearly type of thing, but it was discussed yesterday of looking long-term, multiple years down the line. And that is the important thing, working together with the community to try to meet those ends. So, once again, if something occurred this evening, I am going to take responsibility and apologize for anything that took place tonight. So, thank you. Moving forward, I'm sorry, I diverged.
That's okay. CWCTC 1920 proposed budget.
I'm gonna read these two because they are contracts that we need to get fulfilled. The board will be asked to consider the 2019-2020 proposed budget for Central Westmoreland Career and Technology Center in the amount of $8,496,080. The district's share of that is $299,811.90. A comparison, 2018-2019, the district's share was $307,243.99 for a difference of negative $7,438.09, which is lower than the previous year. So, that is the projected cost for sending our students to CWCTC.
Vince?
Yes, sir.
Last meeting, you said something about the tech budget was gonna change. Isn't this pretty much what it was before?
Well, they're currently, right now, in, and probably Jason might be able to, I'm sorry, Mr. Polikowski might be able to validate this. The CWCT right now is currently in the process of evaluating their programming. They, I was actually asked to sit on a committee that a state representative was brought in, and several superintendents were asked to evaluate the program in how CWCTC might be able to meet current demands and look at programs that might not be meeting current demands. So, they are in flux of evaluating their program and possibly looking to enter into relationships, greater relationships with Westmoreland County Community College and possibly restructuring some of their courses. So, right now, they're kind of in flux.
Changes gonna happen this year, this coming year?
Not with the budget. The budget's gonna continue to be the same way. But, you know, like Vince said, the programs, I think it started whenever you first come aboard, they asked you to be on there. They're looking at programs with low enrollment.
Yeah.
They wanna get rid of those programs and add some new programs. So, that's why they have a committee with Vince and some other superintendents and somebody from the state is taking a look at it. But overall, the budget's down $405,000 from last year, which is good.
Mr. Porter, probably to further, CWCTC has been working, there is Westmoreland County Workforce Development that Mr. Krafcek and I, we attend those meetings. And they are trying to identify the current demands for our students in today's world, which might mean old programs that were offered at the CWCTC might not be relevant. I don't want to say relevant because any of those positions are still relevant. I paid a fortune for a plumber, so I understand that. But, you know, looking to meet what the demands of society is placing our kids, programming, computer programming, med tech, things like that. So, that's the shift that they're looking towards, providing services that might be more relevant in today's world to help them prepare for the future.
I, you know, when you said last week, that's gonna change, I thought you meant the dollar amounts. Okay.
Any further discussion on that? Blackboard renewal confirmation notice?
The board hereby, is that, wait, the board is asked to approve the renewal confirmation notice with blackboard to provide school wire software subscription light pack from 7/1/2019 to 6/30/2020 at a cost of $1,712.8. School wires, web hosting power services from 7/1/2019 to 6/30/2020 at a cost of $5,540.76 for a total renewal amount of $7,552.84. Maybe I read that wrong.
Budget cuts?
Just for clarification, that total is $7,252.84.
Budget cuts?
I would like to start out by saying that I'm an educational leader, and at this point in time, I am not in favor of reducing any service or any activities that would be related to students. I have a responsibility to present information. I also have a responsibility to our students to be able to provide them the things that are necessary to keep them engaged in not only the learning process, but also their overall health and welfare. So, in looking at, I don't know if you had the opportunity to access board docs, I also am, I'm gonna probably emphatically repeat this on several occasions, halfway down on the list is something that is called WIU Elementary Life Skills. I am not proposing, I am not proposing that we eliminate any life skills services. On the contrary, I am actually proposing that we move our life skills services that we currently do not have into the middle school to provide those services for kids that we have the need for. And I will explain that. Currently, right now, at the elementary school, we have three students in our life skills program that are in sixth grade that really should be in the middle school setting. We have two that are in the fifth grade that should be coming next year to the middle school setting, and we have two that are in an outplace setting for a total of seven students. I believe those seven students should be educated within our building. I think we do a very good job of providing services to our students. I am, instead of, it might look that I'm requesting a cut, but actually, I am requesting that we start a life skills program here at the middle school because each one of those seven students, if they were to be sent to an alternative school outside of this district, would roughly run about $30,000 in tuition per student. Seven times 30,000 comes out to around $210,000 additional we would be looking to spend. I currently have the capacity to have that class staffed within this district without an additional cost. So, when you see that, that is what we are talking about. I believe our students need to be brought back in and kept into our brick and mortar buildings. So, please, I'll repeat that again. I am not looking to cut services. The figure that is there was the amount that we are paying the IU for those services. I would much rather keep that money and keep our students in our buildings. So, as Mr. Porter had stated, I am proposing roughly around a $208,000 reduction, which I believe is not going to impact tremendously. It will impact, I'm not gonna sit here and say that it won't, but I am also very reluctant in compromising the ability for our students to be engaged in activities. I will take the time to walk through those, and please, you know, board members, if you have questions, please feel free to ask those. Starting from the top, what I did was I took the code, the description of that code, the proposed cut, the amount that was originally budgeted. We had placed in our budget monies that was called extracurricular for any student, any teacher, or any services that would be provided outside of the confines of the school day. Currently, in the middle school, I know that there was some concerns that students being able to be provided services if they are struggling students. Currently, I know at the middle school, we have, we start our day, every day, with something that is known as an activity period. We start with homeroom, which is roughly 20 minutes, and we move right into an activity period. That activity period provides our students during the course of the day, because there are a lot of students that are engaged in extracurricular activities and whose parents do not have the means to provide transportation after school. We have built it directly into our schedule where students have the opportunity to be provided assistance during the course of the school day. When I was principal, we even further defined that by designating, we operate off of a six-day cycle, which means every day, every day, like A, B, C, D, E, F, day 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Every day, we designate it as a department-designated day where that department has specific rights to call any student in before any other faculty member could. So, we designate time during the course of the day for students to be able to receive assistance in that school day. At the high school, in speaking to Mr. Krafcek, there might be times due to some issues, but there is an IE period that is also provided for students to be able to seek assistance during that school day. So, when we're looking at extracurriculars, it is just those additional salaries that a teacher or staff member might occur. And they were, each building was allotted $10,000 additional into the budget. I am proposing that the primary center, we cut $2,000 of that, and I will, and Mr. Claire, please correct me if I'm wrong, but up to $10,000, I do believe $8,000 of that is designated for kindergarten orientation. So, I do not want that money to be touched because that is an important part of, transition from students that are not going to school into kindergarten is a very important process. I have a granddaughter that will be doing that next year, and I understand the circumstances that she's gonna be facing. I'm also proposing that $8,000 be cut of the original $10,000 from each of the other schools. We have built in additional monies for source for teachers, for subs. On the amount budgeted at the primary center, there was $30,000 that was budgeted for substitute teachers. I am proposing that we do not touch that. At the elementary school, $70,000 was allotted for that. I am asking or proposing that $5,000 of that be reduced. $75,000 was budgeted for the middle school. I am asking that $2,000 of that be cut. And at the high school, $80,000 was allotted for source for teachers, Mission One, ESS. And I'm going to ask that $5,000 of that be cut. And I believe that, I'm just speaking for myself, I think our students, instruction takes place within the confines of the classroom, and I'm hoping that attendance could be good so that our students could, it's important for our students to be educated by our teachers, our classroom teachers. I know this is probably a very hot topic and could be a topic of the issue, but we currently bring in four individuals, one for each building, SPC, SES, SMS, and the high school, that is designated as a building-level sub. They are brought in every day at a cost of roughly around $25,920. I am proposing that we eliminate that with those individuals being moved as the building-level priority substitute teachers. Once again, these are only proposals. As I said, moving down the list, WIU Elementary Life Skills, I think I've already hit that twice, so I will repeat it. I am not proposing a cut in life skills services. I'm doing the contrary. Sub Aids, that was money that was put in there with the aids being moved to ESS. That money is not necessary. We currently have $8,400 that is used for district-wide printing. I'm going to request that that be reduced to 6,000, by $6,000. I think we have the means to be able to use other resources. The concession stand faculty advisor, that salary is $4,282. I'm proposing that we eliminate that. And on the bottom, there are additional contemplated cuts not supported by the superintendent. I do believe, I do understand that we have to meet budgetary constraints. I am also, as I said on several occasions tonight, I am the educational leader of this district. I do believe that textbook adoption is necessary. We have not had a textbook adoption... We have not had a textbook adoption in probably eight to 10 years. We need to, we are a great school, I want to repeat that several times, we are a great school. We are doing wonderfully, as indicated by what I just read earlier about the high school's performance. We have not received the performance standards for the elementary or the middle school, but we are a great district and we have great schools, and I think we need to be current with the curriculum. And I understand that we might need to reduce that. The original budget amount was $277,000. I'm proposing that we reduce that by $100,000, and the rationale for that is, I do believe the high school has the capacity to adjust in talking to the administration there. I do believe currently, right now, the primary source for an updating of the curriculum and adding some resources is at the primary center, the elementary school, and then middle school. So that is why, and I do believe if we take that in a two-part, I know that we wanted to be aggressive administratively and say that we would like to have textbook adoption for math all in one year, and then look at the next year to have a language arts adoption, and so on. I understand also that there is only X amount of money that we have available to us, and if we have to take that in chunks and steps, I think that we need to look at that so that we are, in the end, updating our curriculum and providing our students current content. So that is, that is why I propose that, and I have to be an advocate because we are implementing new curriculum into our schools. I know there is the argument, well, okay, people should step up and things like that. I can't, I can't tell you how much, when I was a principal, I relied on the team leaders to assist me in working with the teams when there are times when I was pulled out of a curriculum meeting because of a student-related issue, either discipline-wise or a health concern concerning that student. So that is, I understand the need for reductions, but I'm also giving you my rationale as to why I might be reluctant in proposing that they be cut.
The total book adoption's somewhere around 300,000.
Yes, sir.
And when's the last time this district had book adoption?
Probably eight or nine years ago.
When I was here?
Yes, sir.
That's crazy.
We currently, and I apologize because I am no longer that person that's in the classrooms in the day-to-day, but we have, we have books in our classrooms that are falling apart. And I just, once again, I go back to the fact, we have great schools, and we are doing very well for what we have, but don't our students deserve also to have current content? That is, that is my, that is my question. So that, that is, those are my suggestions. And I do believe, once again, Mr. Porter, in working with you, I think that $208,000 was already factored into your analysis, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that if Mr. Marnell and I can digest and analyze everything, and I'm really hoping that this is where, this is the extent.
Well, I'll tell you what, I didn't discuss these cuts with you, but we're $200 out there.
I would like to think the great minds think like, but maybe you're the only one that have that. I'm being a wise guy.
We have no personnel. Citizens comments?
Is it turned on? Check to see if it's turned on. Is it turned on, or is there a button on?
Testing, there we go. It seems to me that this school board is not being transparent. They're spending so much time blaming others that they refuse to look at themselves. You give us one budget to look at, but not another one. You have these totals, but not exactly what you are spending. We are in debt because it seems like no one can use a calculator. You have almost a $1 million difference between two different budgets. From an outsider's perspective, this is ridiculous. You're being about as transparent as stained glass. Looking back is a great way to learn from mistakes and see what went right. It is needed, but we cannot stay in the past, and it seems like so many on the board want to. That's all.
Thank you for your apology, Mr. Mashah. I feel that, I spoke with you earlier on the phone today, said I was going to come here, I was going to be quiet, I was going to have an open mind. That was generally my intention. But I just want to say a couple of things. The first thing is that I hope you all support the life skills program coming back to the middle school. I think that's really important for our students. The budget cut that you're proposing is $50,000, but that's generally probably a lot more than that because if they receive any special services there, and transportation's not included in that amount of money. So we can save even more. I think that that is a great thing that we need to be looking at. A question that I had was that Mr. Porter said we're saving roughly $800,000 in salaries going forward, correct? Yet the reduction in salaries is only $26,806, which means that there's an increase in salaries here of $773,194, not including what goes into pensions, not including what the taxes are. So if my number's correct, like just going by what Mr. Marnell had, it says minus $26,806. So I just want to say that we still have a pretty large increase in salaries. I might be wrong. You can check me and let me know on that. So I was looking at the paper that he had given, handed out on page, was it? Third page from the back. This page here where it says budget prep expend by major function and object. No, I'm sorry, I'm lying to you. So that's the next page, the budget preparation, 2019-2020. So I'm looking at that top line where it says, major object 100, wages, gives a $12 million last year, $12 million proposed this year, difference of 26, 806. Do you see that there?
Yeah.
So, so I'm just roughly saying that, you know, even though we've had almost a million dollars in decrease in wages, we're still having almost $800,000 increase in wages as well. That's my only point there. The other thing that I want to point out is on this other paper that he handed us from the WIU, and it goes through, and I don't really understand assessed values and all of that, but in looking at this paper, I can see that we are one of the lowest assessed value. $117,000, I can't read this small anymore, I should probably wear my glasses, that's what my husband's sitting back there saying. But two districts that are lower than us are Jeanette and Manassas, and one district that is surprisingly higher than us is New Kensington. So I'm just saying, when we're looking at this area, it's bad. Drive down the road, look to your left, we're tearing houses down. This is not Steel Valley. We do not have a river run through us where somebody's going to come in and build big, new, beautiful, this, that, and the other. This is Scottsdale. When you say to me that your village is 3 mil in Hemfield, I don't know if you're bragging or what, but in Scottsdale, we're paying 20 mil. We are paying 20 mil. That is one of the highest, I'm not talking school district, I'm talking Borough of Scottsdale is paying 20 mil to the 3 mil in Hemfield. I've been told not to compare us to Hemfield, but I sat here and listened to you compare us. You're paying more taxes than we're paying. Technically, no, you're not. No, you're not. And I'm sorry if you feel that I disrespected you by saying that you should be at this meeting, but I do feel that way. That's not a lie. They voted on the school calendar on December 3rd, so it's not like that happened on March 1st, it happened on December 3rd. So I just want to say that I have gone to great pain to swallow what's going on with my son here. I have spoke with Mr. Mashah numerous times personally. I have been in Mr. Clara's office more times than I want to tell in the last month, and have had doctor appointment after doctor appointment trying to make a good decision for my son. And I feel that I have, and I feel that we were going forward on a good foot here, and then that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams, I would like to believe that we could continue on those good feet.
Oh, we certainly can. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kristy Smith. I actually overlap with some of Michelle's comments. I did have a question. My question was on the third page of the packet we received. Under B, Summary of Expenditures, it does say that there is a decrease in the wages and salaries for the next, for this school, next school year of $26,000. I also have a question because it doesn't add up to me. I don't understand how we can only be decreasing that much. I guess my question would be, where is the increase coming from, or where's it going?
Okay, the decrease would be eight teachers, average $75,000 on top step, $600,000. PCA salaries were 340, that's $940,000. Take off of that, 350,000 for wage increases, $100,000 for two new teachers, that's 450. And Jim also has on account 191, which would be the aides, a reduction of 300,000. So you're, there's 750,000 there from the 960.
So can you tell me where the wage increases, are those for?
That salary increases by contract across the board.
Okay. I still don't think that adds up to 26, but I'd have to do those numbers in my head.
I'm sorry.
I don't, still don't see how that adds up to only 26, but I have to do those numbers in my head. You talked real fast.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that number, I just got it. I'm looking at the original budget that I work from.
Right.
And total, if you look at the salary decrease for account 121, which is teachers, and 191, which are the aides, Jim has a total of 385,000, which makes sense to me. 960 less the 750, see in that ballpark area.
960 minus 750, that's 200,000?
Right.
So when you're saying 26,000 decrease on this other paper?
Okay, so there's 600,000 in salary increases for eight teachers.
Mm-hmm.
Add back 100 for two new teachers, because there's not replacing six, okay? So that puts us down to 500,000. Then the aides were at 340, I believe, that's 840,000, okay? Deduct out your salary increases of 350,000.
I'm carrying.
I lost track here.
That's 490,000.
Pardon?
We're to 490,000.
What else, there's something else. Pardon?
I mean, you can get back to me on this. I don't expect you to have, I mean, I can't keep a track of the numbers. I just didn't know if maybe that could become available exactly, because it seems to be some sort of discrepancy that I can't come up with.
No, to me, no, I understand that 26,000 is misleading, but I'm looking at the actual budget. The salary decreases for teachers and the aides, Jim has 385,000 total.
So why does that not transfer over to that other paper?
I don't know. I don't know how Jim calculated that. It comes off the system, right, Jim?
Well, you know what that page is? That is the net change. That is the net change in salaries. So you have the salaries that are in there for all the existing employees and pay raises comparing to the current year budget, to where we're now at the proposed budget. So that is the net changes. So the changes that were taken away offset the increases that were in there. So the net, there's a net change in expenditures.
Okay. Okay. So after all the teachers left and the PCA's were really just going down 26.
What you don't see is the school board has the detailed budget.
Right.
All the employees in there, they're in there.
Right.
So that's the net change in total dollars.
And to go with the transparency thing, I know I've requested it many times, that, so that we could see these things, because this is extremely misleading, the 26,000, it doesn't make sense. It just causes further questions and further rumors and everything. It doesn't help at all. So like I said, I've requested that several times. I haven't gotten anything yet, so.
Kristy, your third second.
Okay. So for my last 30 seconds, I would like to say, thank Mr. Mashah for having the meeting with us yesterday. However, I would ask the board, and all of us, I think that we can always treat each other respectfully. And I'm disappointed and saddened to see that that did not happen tonight, and it should definitely come from this end as an example. And I would hope that the board would talk together, and someone should stop things when they happen. I'm not sure whose job that is. It should be stopped out here, and it should be stopped up there. So I would ask whoever's responsibility that is to please help us foster a working relationship because that doesn't help.
Good evening. My name's Candace Raymond. I, like Michelle, had not planned on saying anything this evening, but I just wanted to make a couple of really quick points. For one thing, I did a little bit of research. I am originally from Hemfield, and so I naturally gravitate towards that comparison to where I came from, to where I am now. And I had a chance to do some research about the township and where their revenue comes from versus the school district and where their revenue comes from. And the township itself gets a great deal of its tax, or of its revenue from income taxes, which is an entirely different kind of tax base, and it makes a huge difference. Your property taxes stay very stagnant, your income taxes don't necessarily, they can go up, they can increase, making it much easier to not have to increase taxes. So I just wanted to kind of make that point because I don't want people to get misled into thinking that those are the same things. And the other point that I wanted to make really quickly is that last Thursday, I stood in front of this board and I made two suggestions, thinking that absolutely nothing would come of them. As of last Thursday, I felt really disappointed in general about the direction I thought the district was going, and I was at home on Realtor.com looking at houses in Hemfield. My parents' house, next-door neighbors, is up for rent. I was like, we'll move back to Hemfield. Less than a week later, I've had the opportunity to be part of a meeting with Mr. Mashah and some other community representatives and some teacher representatives, and I never actually imagined that that would happen as quickly as it happened, and I am incredibly grateful to Mr. Mashah for having the nerve to do that. And I'm really happy that that happened, and I feel a lot better and a lot more hopeful. My point, I would say to everyone, is to echo kind of what Kristy said about being respectful. But my point is also to the community that it's easy to sit around and complain, but if you come up here with suggestions, there's a very good chance they may be taken seriously, and we may be able to actually work together to get somewhere. So while in the past, I've been one of the first people to come up here and call the board out on stuff or to complain about stuff, I'm here to say that at least a suggestion was made and it was taken seriously, and I greatly appreciate that. And everything's not going to get fixed, you know, Rome wasn't built in a day, but I do feel like at least we can be making some positive steps, so thank you for that.
Mr. Mashah, you opened the building, the meeting tonight with a very positive note. And one of the saddest things that happened, certainly when I was here before, in 2012, the high school was in failing status. 2013, failing status.
I, I think, I hope that that's not the end of it.
Dr. Fike, in, in having the conversation with those individuals, I did, and, and they were under the consensus also, that that committee does need to expand to include a greater sampling of, of people. So we, we, that was not a one-time deal. This, this is hopefully something that we're going to continue to do, because I do believe right now there is a major rift in philosophies and, and perspectives, and, and I really would like to take all steps to be able to work with the community in, in all aspects of that to try to figure out what is best for this district. I want to repeat, we have a great district.
You do. But I want you to extend that invitation to other members in the community, too. There are a lot of people out there, Vince, who care about what's going on, a lot of people. And I think if they would know that they were welcome to come in and participate, they would be happy to do that. Thank you.
Point taken, Dr. Fike.
So Jan Kiefer, I, too, am offended by that. You know, I'm up here every day. These people are newcomers, but you made your decision, you played your card. So you're, I like the news report about the, the ranking of the high school, and that was good. And also, if you read the news, maybe you did, Vince, I'll talk to you directly here if you don't mind. It said that Pennsylvania teachers are in the top 10% of the country, or in the top 10 states of salary. Did you read that?
I, I did not, sir.
Okay. I'm just going to go on with my comment as if you should have, because, you know, it was out there. If I see it, you know, that's not my job. But if the teachers are in the top 10%, and let me, let me preface this before I get something thrown at me. I'm a big proponent for the public programs, you know. I, I see our DEP has no money, and, you know, our garbage dump up here is not being monitored. You know, it just goes through the environmental things that I work on on a daily basis, the social programs to care for the elderly, the children, you know, all these things. So there's, you know, and education is, is important to me, too, and I want it funded just as much as these other things, and I think all of these things should be funded more. Here's my point, though, about the news story. If the teachers in Pennsylvania are in the top 10% of the, in the top 10 states of the Uni, of the United States, I think that those teachers' salaries, and we didn't talk about that tonight here, or, you know, we didn't say about a contract coming up, and, you know, we're cutting 5,000 here and 10,000 here, but we didn't say, if we just talk about a quarter percent here on a salary, you know, could blow out all this other stuff. So let me conclude here, because I know sometimes I don't come to a point, and that's all right with me. If these teachers are in the top 10 of the, of the country, and our cost of living is not what it is in San Francisco or up and down the East Coast or in the South, I would contend that those salaries should reflect the community where the teachers are having their cost of living. So there should be a direct correlation between the cost of living and a teacher's salary. And that way, the poor teachers in Oklahoma, or in West Virginia, or Arizona, that were at the bottom of the heap, would come up, and the people at the top would come down. So as we go through this budget stuff, I think we should look at our contract, not what we've done for the last 30 years, but where we are nationally so that it's fair for teachers across the country, and where our cost of living here is. So if you could make something of that, I think that's important. Thanks.
Motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?